All right, it is now seven o'clock. Call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Huffman Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please let the record show that all board members are present tonight. Do we have any public comments? Nope. All right, so I'll tell you what, let's all rise. Mr. Burke's gonna lead us in prayer, and then we have some guests who are gonna lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us be here this evening. Thank you for this community that we live in. Pray that you'll be with the staff and the students, and pray that you'll be with those that might need your help, and pray that you'll lift them up at this time. Pray that you'll be with our military and our first responders. Christ be with this nation. And pray that you'll help us get home in a safely manner. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, I can welcome up Taylor LeVere and Reese and Cooper Marari. Thank you all for coming. Whenever you're ready, start us off with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all so much. Sum of HES's finest, right there. Thank you all for leading us there. This is so much better when we have the students leading us in the pledge. All right, so I'll tell you what, we can start off with the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Superintendent. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Burke. Discussion items? All in favor? Thank you. All right, and we'll flip over to reports to the board. I'll start with the President's Report first. Just thank you all for doing the presentations from the Education Foundation. It's long overdue. Good to be able to see the stuff that's been going on. Hopefully, we can continue to hear the music, all that good stuff, see the wonderful things that kids are able to do. Thank any, a lot of people that have donated to the foundation are here tonight. So, I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that does that. Jared devoted a lot of his time over the years, Matt, myself, and so many others in this room tonight. It's just such a big deal. And just publicly want to thank everybody for that. It means so much. And kind of keeping with the President's Report, a few of us got to go to convocation this past month. Want to commend our superintendent, the whole leadership team. He put on a great convocation. It was awesome. Good job by everybody. Another thanks to the Education Foundation. Such a big deal giving out those new teacher grants and the awards for the Teachers of the Year and all the different employees of the year. It's just such a fun time to see everybody get hyped up and ready to go for the year. So, anyway, glad to be able to be a part of that. Let's see, I know we've had several committee meetings going on, several still on the schedule. Lots of beginning of the year activities that a bunch of us have been able to be a part of. Want to open the floor for a second? Is there anything anybody attended or anything anybody want to bring up or discuss or anything like that? If not, the one that's looking forward to coming up here, our newly formed Goals Committee, gonna be getting together here in just a couple of weeks, finalize our goals for the year. So, we'll be bringing that for the board to go over at the next meeting. So, it'll be something kind of new and different that we'll have coming up. And then, outside of that, training opportunities. The biggie up on the list coming up at the end of September is gonna be our Tacitazby Convention. So, if you haven't made your plans for that, please do so. And Haley put up here and sent us all an email about the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards has a meeting coming up here the second week of September. If anybody wants to make it a point, let her know so she can reserve you a spot for that. And outside of that, Dr. Swallow, you want to take over?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. And we're going to go ahead and start with our Deputy Superintendent, and he's gonna go over where we are with BSC and where we're headed.
Good evening. Last month on our BSC, we enjoyed a comprehensive end-of-the-year report, and you guys gave us some good feedback on what we had reporting to you guys and what you'd like to see some adjustments moving forward in the future. We're working on that. But since Mr. Vaughn referenced the board goals being finalized, we're gonna put off our delivery schedule for next month, which keeps us on schedule as a matter of fact. We have this built in for when the goals are finalized, we don't want to have anything that we adjust that'll misalign with the goal. So, once the goals are finalized, we'll put those, incorporate those into the BSC where necessary, and then next month we'll begin our annual reporting in September. Start with Priority One, as we normally do, and then we'll be off and running for the school year for the BSC. But in the meantime, just like Swallow said, just an update. Any questions or comments before we proceed with next month? I think we'll be in good shape. Okay, then I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Perez. She's gonna come up and talk about where things are with the A through F accountability.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is like deja vu because at this very same meeting last year, I came up here and I shared the exact same information. So, as I'm sure you all have heard, the litigation has opened again with regards to our accountability across the state. And so, yet again, the accountability ratings, more importantly, the A through F letter grades, have been postponed. Again, we have not yet received scores that would indicate letter grades within the new accountability manual that went into effect last year. Nevertheless, this year we have more information than we have since last year as far as being able to draw some conclusions about our performance. So, starting on page thirty-seven, what you have in front of you is our raw component scores. So, these scores are what we've earned within accountability, within the domains and accountability. So, I'm going to kind of explain each domain and what each of them mean, and then I will kind of highlight where we landed. You have the scores as well, the raw scores from last year. What we don't have is how those scaled out into the letter grade system. So, where you see Domain One, Student Achievement, that is looking at all of our tests. So, any of our STAR tests, any of our EOCs, and it's looking at straight-up achievement. How many kids were at Approaches, how many were at Meets, and how many were at Masters. Students that are at Meets and Masters carry more weight because they count in each of those thresholds. So, that's where you'll see that data. Domain Two-A, because Domain Two is broken up into two parts, Two-A is School Progress. And that is only looking at reading and math results by student year over year. So, a student performs one year at one level, and in order to earn their point or credit in Two-A, they have to have shown a year's growth. And that usually translates into either a statistically significant difference in their scale score or they jump a threshold. So, they either go from Did Not Meets to Meets, Did Not Meets to Approaches, Approaches, Meets, keeps their Masters. And so, that's Two-A. I want to mention Two-A is directly tied to our TIA. So, that's where we are measuring the effectiveness of our teachers in order for them to earn that teacher incentive allotment. Domain Two-B, it's where they take our results and they compare us to schools that look like us, and they do that based on our economic disadvantaged rate. It's very hard to control for Two-B. It's kind of after the fact. Once you take the test, once you get put in that comparison group, they rank you, and depending on where you fell in that ranking, it drives your score. And then you've got Domain Three. Domain Three is a catch-all. It's called closing the gaps, but really, it's your Domain One achievement and your Domain Two student growth for reading and math, looking only at Meets grade level or above and across each of your subgroups. So, now that I've gone over those, you can look at the data and you're gonna see some growth. At HES, you see tremendous growth in Domain Two-A. We see a lot of growth there, nearly thirty percentage points. When you look at closing the gaps, Domain Three for Huffman Elementary, again, you see thirty-two point gains. When you look at Falcon Ridge, again, those same two domains showed tremendous growth. Now, before we switch to the next page, I want to mention, we know that there's still a lot of work to do, particularly in achievement. And so, what we've been focusing on, and I know those of you in our committee understand, and I've been saying it all the time, we're looking at our first teach. Making sure our first teach is our best teach. Making sure that we are focusing on good Tier One instruction, and we're doing that through implementation of our Falcon Five, our instructional initiative. As you turn the page and you look at Huffman Middle School, you'll see Huffman Middle School grew in Domain Two-A, Two-B, and Domain Three. And Domain Three's gains were huge. They were huge gains, thirty-three points in that Domain Three. The high school, also, big gains. You see gains in Domain One achievement. You see particularly in that subset at the high school, you're looking at CCMR rates, you're looking at graduation rates and the performance rate. So, you'll see our graduation rate went up and our CCMR rates. You'll also see growth. We ranked very high when it was compared to our comparison group in Domain Two-B. And then again, you'll see Domain Three had seventeen point gains. So, we do see a strong performance there. We are currently working with our principals and our campus teams. We went over our data in small groups last week, and we're gonna be goal-setting based on each individual campus's data and looking forward to sharing those goals with you all and progress monitors that come after that. Any questions? Yep.
So, like on, when you're looking at Huffman Middle School, where you've got three of the areas are, I mean, you've got increases, right?
Mm-hmm.
You have one relatively small decrease on the Domain One. How do you read that? Does that mean that we're tracking in the right direction? We just didn't get the raw scores we're looking at? I mean, what, how do I?
So, we, there you're gonna read into, we have growth and the achievement is not there. So, that's where, I think I've said it with some of you in some conversations, you want to have growth or achievement, both, but you never want to have neither. So, in this case, what you see kind of consistent in this data, we have the growth. We now need to focus on bringing that rigor and that achievement up because Domain One is the driver of everything. We want to find our A in Domain One. That's the North Star goal, but we know we have gaps to close, and we're seeing some of those gaps close. And you see that in Two-A.
Has the scoring changed between the two years, no?
No, they have not changed the minimum score performance in the last two years.
I guess like, first off, like, congrats. Like, the growth is obvious, but like, I don't understand how that happens. How HES, you know, has the achievement from sixty-nine to sixty-four, but the growth be so high?
It's the growth, some of the students, honestly, you have some students that perform so low in the Did Not Meets category that you also can earn, a student can go from low Did Not Meets to high Did Not Meets. They still didn't pass, but they showed a year's growth, yeah. So, we're getting there, we're pushing it. Like, that's, I mean, the principals are working hard. We just launched our walkthrough form on Falcon Five. Everybody who's going in classrooms, we're all calibrated on what we're looking for, and we think that that one message and that one focus on these five basic instructional strategies, what expectations, is gonna drive that first teach.
So, if we're reading this right, the growth is gonna always probably come before the achievement? If you see growth year after year after year, eventually you're gonna start reaching those achievement goals, correct?
Yes, but growth is such a tricky thing. Growth is hard to sustain, and so that, we've had this conversation. Growth is great, and we always want to see students grow. But at some point, we've gotta hit the achievement, and that's really where the biggest bang for our buck is.
When you get there, you gotta keep them there.
Yeah.
You're gonna have smaller, you're gonna have smaller growth, obviously, but if I'm reading it right, you're gonna get to achievement.
Yes.
You're gonna have smaller growth, but your achievement's gonna be there.
Yes. And again, with the litigation, we don't know if anything's gonna modify within the manual as it's presented. And that's why the formula is designed that whichever one of Domain One, Two-A, or Two-B is your highest, that gets plugged in at seventy percent, and the remaining thirty percent is your Domain Three. So, yes, we want to track everything. You want to track, and you want to track achievement. And if you don't hit the achievement, you better be hitting the growth because what we don't want to have is when you're not hitting either, so.
And we're trying to move all these subsets of students also, right? We're not leaving the overachievers out.
No, and that's Domain Three. Domain Three holds you accountable for every single student, and it breaks, you have a new group that's called a high-focus group, and it takes like all of your special education, your economic disadvantage, your emergent bilinguals, and anyone who is in transition. You have like your migrants, which we don't have very many, but any student that's highly mobile, they get put in that one group, and then you receive a score there too. So, you have kids that hit you multiple times, and so, that's kind of the conversation we're having. How are we gonna track this? And we've got to be like laser-like focused where teachers know who every student is in their classroom and how they impact us.
So, it's not complicated at all?
No, not at all. It's so much fun, too. That's, the tests are third through fifth. But the only ones that count from elementary in Two-A are fourth and fifth. All of them. Yeah, just the EOCs.
We are comparing students to themselves to the next year.
To themselves, yes. And it's a powerful thing to be able to goal-set on that and loop in the parent, loop in the student, and have them understand their goal. And so, that's kind of some of the things we want to work on. If that's where the goal-setting, because they're gonna decide, the principals and their teams are gonna decide, where do they want to goal-set? Are we, because the way you look at data in Domain One is different than you look at Two-A, the way you look at Three. And so, wherever they decide they want to goal-set on, we're gonna walk back. How do we measure where we're at and be able to, just temperature check throughout the year to know if we're on track?
So, on the five percent drop on the Domain Ones for elementary, I mean, we see subsequent growth in those other areas. So, what does that, what does that tell you?
So, and I don't, I don't believe in using excuses. That's like one of my big pet peeves. But we did have the math scores, there was a significant drop at the elementary level, and we did shut down the test during the test, during the storm. Not to say that that's a hundred percent the reason, but we can't, we'd be remiss if we didn't consider that as a possible factor.
You're talking about you shut down the test?
Yes. During the storm, the power went out. Kids are screaming because the power went out. And then you have all the lightning, and then, you know, parents showing up to pick up the students. So, we're on the phone with TEA. We hadn't shut down the test because you do not do anything until TEA says so. So, finally, they said, hey, go ahead and shut down the test, and y'all can retake it next week. Panic ensues of like, oh my God, they're gonna let us stop the test, retake the test? We were hoping students, when they retook it, would have taken the time now that they're in a calm environment, revisit their questions, but we, you can't verify that because there are strict protocol on test security. So, we don't know the impact one way or the other. They're like within a ninety-five percent confidence interval of the reliability of the scores. And that's something that we're actually gonna be looking at now is, we had a lot of ECRs, which is the Extended Constructed Response at Zeros, and the kids actually wrote, like, my own personal son, he wrote a decent sentence. He should have gotten at least a point, but he got a zero. So, that's one of the things we want to look back on, and then now you know better, you do better and focus on that.
The questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Dr. Perez.
All right. Hopefully, mine'll be a little bit easier to understand. So, not always, especially at the beginning of the school year. Operations Report, we've been busy with the start of the school year. It's, was a little bit chaotic with the hurricane that took us out for a few weeks, just our normal functions. However, our team's done a great job of getting going. So, just a couple of things I'd like to highlight. We'll talk about the bond stuff in a little bit. We've been really busy with that. But next Wednesday, we're gonna have our first-ever Realtor Breakfast. Kind of a breakfast time for us to sit down with realtors, visit with them about kind of our growth that we're expecting, how we're preparing for that growth. Also, we're gonna have some of the developers come speak to those guys also. Our realtors are hungry for information, and so, we wanted to get everybody in the same room together to do that. We've got one of the title companies that's gonna sponsor the breakfast for us. So, we're excited about that, that's coming up. One of the other big things, kind of along those same lines, is our land consultant that we've hired now or in the process of finishing that. Ms. Ramer and I will be meeting with him tomorrow to kick that off so we can start the process of doing our public notice and everything for the land there across from the high school. Just a couple of other quick things. Just again, a shout-out to our maintenance guys who were already behind because of the hurricane, had our campuses up and going. Us, like everybody else, have been fighting with air conditioners and this intense heat that we've had. However, they've been working very hard to make sure we do that. Our child nutrition, we had our first Child Nutrition Institute, is what they call that, for our child nutrition workers. Simone and her team did an awesome job of really making a learning experience. They did some team-building activities to really try to build a team atmosphere amongst our child nutrition. Got to use our training kitchen that we've been purchasing the equipment for. Got to use that for a lot of our new staff members, and it's been a great asset to that team. And then, transportation. We did have a rough start, transportation. We, you know, asked everybody with our changes to register their child for transportation if they wanted those services. Unfortunately, we picked up several hundred kids extra who were not registered. And so, you can imagine, the first day of school was a little bit crazy. We had all hands on deck trying to get kids. We weren't gonna leave kids at school. We weren't gonna abandon our kids there and say, oh, sorry, your mom didn't sign you up, so we're leaving you. And so, we got together and created a system that worked for us. So, we're gonna look at that registration process to see how next year we can better improve that. We think that if we make its own little separate tab so parents understand that this is really what they're signing up for. But our buses were overpacked. There's some of them that we're rerouting now. We thought we could do away with the route. We're probably gonna have to add that back, but trying to just look at that. So, we've seen a lot of positive momentum, changes in that direction, but we did have to make some adjustments there that we weren't prepared for. A couple of our stops also that we were trying to, you know, do more of our group stops, some of them just weren't in a good spot, and we needed to relook at that. And we moved some of those around just to make sure that we're providing a safe bus stop for our kids. So, as our parents call, we're taking notes and trying to monitor that the best that we can. We know our plan's not perfect, and we want to continue to work on that and make sure that we're doing best for our students, so. Any questions about Operations Report?
I have one. On the bus rider situation, we, obviously, I know you guys, we're never gonna leave those kids, but is there some type of buffer period we're using now to say, hey, you have this much time to get yourself registered?
Yeah.
I mean, is?
It's a great question. We were gonna try that, and it's not working. I mean, we have our kids that we know are our students at the bus stop in the mornings, and we also have them in the afternoon. So, we are currently working now that we've kind of figured out who our ridership is to start sending communication out to those parents saying, hey, that we need it. It's really for the safety of that child so that we know where that, this is where we want this child going. Make sure that we're on the up and up with that from a safety standpoint. And so, we're gonna be sending some communication with that. We know that when we make big changes like this, we always say change is three years. You know, the first year's really rough, year two gets a little bit better, and year three, we're like, oh, it was never a problem, you know? So, we're working on communication with that to try to get those students.
Well, obviously, updating information you have is a lot easier than obtaining it the first time, so.
Right.
We carry it over to the next year.
Correct. And we're looking at some of our systems. We think we can do some better steps to maybe try to help with that a little bit. So, yes, sir. All right. Moving on to the bond report. Our bonds projects, we have been hit the ground running. It's full steam ahead with this. Our interactive displays, we actually expect our first displays to arrive this week. Ms. Davis and her team are going to train. So, we had the group of teachers who really helped us narrow down the displays that we wanted. We're gonna train those guys first on those so they can kind of be a trainer of trainers for their campuses. So, they'll be the first ones to get the displays, and then we will begin passing those out. And our goal is to have all those panels distributed by the end of September. That's a, we pushing it. We think we can get them out that fast. The company's in charge of that, but hopefully by the end of September, we'll be good with that. Our HES re-roof project is definitely in full swing ahead. They are currently, almost all the gravel removed, currently working in our first two phases on the roofing. That company's been great to work for so far. Ms. LeVere had one day where she called me and told me there was an airplane landing on her building. It was loud one day, and so, we had to call them, and those guys made some adjustments. And so, they were in an area that we didn't think would be that loud for the kids, and so, we had to make some adjustments. But other than that, it's been pretty. Very quickly, yeah. It was good, so. Safety and security, our district cameras and door access controls. We had our pre-proposal conference on August twenty-second. We had, we reserved the business conference room, which is a little bit smaller because there was something going on here, and we set up for like fifteen or twenty people. We had thirty-two people show up for that. Brian with Leaf said that, he's like, I'm pretty sure you had all of Houston here. He hadn't seen that many people show up for a pre-proposal conference in a long time. So, we're excited that hopefully that's gonna help us with our pricing whenever we get those. That's something that we would be bringing to the September board meeting for approval on that. Our CTE center and gym at the high school, we have been having a lot of meetings. Ms. McKinley-Kay has been helping us a lot with a lot of our programming and making sure our programs have what they need within our design. Again, that's something that we will bring to our board subcommittee, Construction Subcommittee, on September twelfth to take a look at and see where we're at with that. And then, with hopefully our goal of having approval at the September board meeting for the schematic design. And then, the gym is the same thing. We've had a hard time with logistics and functionality, just trying to figure out how to make everything work. And so, we've had several meetings with that. Coach Booton and his staff's been a great resource for us to kind of just talk through those scenarios. But again, that's something we'll be presenting to the Subcommittee on the twelfth, and then looking for schematic design approval at the September board meeting. Also, our HMS additions and renovations. We have our hundred percent SD meeting this week, so we're excited about those changes and additions that are coming on. That again, September twelfth, we're gonna try to knock out all these SDs at the Subcommittee so that then for the board meeting on September, we'd also be looking to approve SD for HMS. And then, two other things. Our miscellaneous MEP projects over at HES. We took our maintenance guys, brought in four or five of our techs out there into our conference room and kind of really just went over some of our MEP problems. We're trying to do a good study of that and trying to make sure we're repairing what we need to repair in that building to keep it functioning for our intended purposes down the road.
Remind me, is that one gonna fall under PPK or BRW?
Uh, PPK. And then, I'm sorry, no, that's BRW.
That's BRW.
Yes, sir. And then last, we had our Community Construction Oversight Committee. We had a really good meeting this month. We talked about some of the schematic design, very high level. Talked about some of the additions and some of the thoughts behind some things at the middle school, some of our pinch points, our high-traffic areas, and had some really, really good conversations. The next meeting's gonna be September nineteenth, and at that time, we would have a little bit more discussion if the board is okay with that, to show them some of the SD and talk through some of that just to make sure from our community standpoint, we're meeting, checking all the boxes that we need to. Anything about that, questions I can answer? Good? All right, thank you, guys.
Dr. Skinner, I would like to thank you for putting together that real estate meeting.
Oh, yes, sir.
I think that's gonna be real positive for us, an opportunity for us to exchange some information with one another that'll be really valuable. I think it's long overdue, so thank you for doing that.
I appreciate that. We, Ms. Fortenberry put that on Facebook, our social media post, just before lunchtime. As of about an hour and a half ago is when I looked at it, we already had twenty-two or twenty-three realtors, something like that, already signed up for it, so. We're at thirty already? We were planning on fifteen or so, fifteen or twenty, so it's gonna be good. And I've talked to several developers who are excited about it too, to get to come out and visit with everybody, so. Thank you. out and visit with everybody, so, thank you.
Nice. Excellent, Ms. Raymer.
Hello, good evening.
Evening.
So first, we're going to talk about the tax collection report on page 49. This is showing that we have not collected any 2024 taxes because that, we are now in the new year, but we have not, we don't even have the certified values yet, so it's going to show 0% there. But we did collect $375,000 in the month of July for prior year's taxes. Yeah, that was the month to date for July. Then moving on to the general fund report on page 53, we are 8% of the way through the year. One of the things that I did a little bit differently now that we are in a new year is I separated out, there's two additional columns here, one that says the percent that is expended, and then two more columns that have, in addition to that, the amount encumbered and the amount expended and encumbered. I know that was a little something we had questions on last year, so I separated that out so that we could see what that looks like. As you'll see, we are 12% expended through the year. We pay a lot of those items at the beginning of the year, like insurance, the copier, purchase lease, things like that. Also, you're going to notice that there are some items in facilities acquisition and construction, technology is a little higher. We did have some hurricane barrel items that have come through that we've had to address, and next month, I will come to you to address those in the budget. We actually have a meeting with FEMA tomorrow to start looking at those damage, to do a damage assessment. So I'll have a better idea by the September board meeting to be able to bring that to Moving on to the food service report on page 55, I also mimicked the general fund report so that they looked the same. And again, we're 8% through the year. We haven't seen a lot of revenue or expenditures to date in July because school had not started back yet. But this is what it looks like right now. The biggest piece that you're going to see are the salaries and benefits, which are 8%. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Raymer. How's it been for you so far in dealing with DRS? And I know you've talked, you talked some about FEMA stuff. Just, how's it been for you? I know, I know Dr. Skinner's had a good experience, but how's your...
Very good, very good. I've enjoyed it. Mr. Copeland, who I work with on the FEMA items, is very knowledgeable. He, he worked with those guys previously before he moved over to DRS, so he's very knowledgeable, and he's helping us navigate a lot of those things that you might not ever have thought of before, so it's been great.
Awesome, thank you. And I just want to comment that, thank you for adding that column, I think that's helpful. And I'm glad to see you making this your own.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyway, just want to commend you. All right. So we'll move into business and discussion, starting with the meal prices. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I recommend that the board approve the increase of the adult breakfast meal price from $2.85 to $3.30, and lunch meal price from $4.50 to $5.
Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird?
So this is obviously something that we would prefer not to do, but like everything else, prices are going up. So if you guys remember from previous years, our adult price has to be higher than what our reimbursement rate is for students, and so with all things combined, and so that's going to push us up. So our actual breakfast price puts us to $3.29, so we're going to go and round that up to $3.30. And then for lunches, it has to be $4.99, so we're going to round that to $5. So part of our inflation, all the price hikes that we're seeing, so.
Questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
If she cares, thank you. All right, moving on to the M-Class renewal, do I have a motion?
Yes, I recommend that the board approve the renewal for M-Class Assessment Boost and Lectura Grades K6 for the 24, 25 school year in the amount of $52,580.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird?
All right, well, M-Class is our assessment that we utilize for early reading, just basic reading. We use that for all of our students, kinders through six. We administer the exam or the assessment beginning of year, middle of year, end of year, and so that's the assessment suite part of the purchase, the renewal. The second part, Boost and Lectura, is the app that the students then can work on, and it's an adaptive program based on the data from the assessment. It's, this is a renewal, we're using, we've been using this now a couple of years, but this is going to be our first year utilizing M-Class as part of our TIA designation protocol for our kinder first and second grade teachers.
Questions?
Is this IMA funds or...
Yes.
Okay. General company.
I noticed Amplify's in there.
So Amplify's the parent company, but M-Class is the sub-company, and that's the program that we're purchasing. And so M-Class assesses reading based on the science of teaching reading, and that directly aligns with our curriculum, which is HMH inter-reading.
But we're not using their curriculum?
No, we use HMH, so that's the curriculum we adopted. M-Class is the supplement, so we do the assessment, the intervention side of it, and it's basically focusing on the foundational reading skills and eliminating the risk of reading difficulty for students.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. All right, moving on to truth and taxation, do we have a motion?
Yes, and I can motion to approve the resolution to designate the district's tax assessor-collector to calculate the new, the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and the other truth and taxation requirements for the district.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird? All right, Ms. Raymer.
Okay, this is just a one-time resolution that the board needs to take to designate the tax assessor-collector as, as the person who calculates the various tax rates, the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and all other truth and taxation requirements. And there's no need to change this resolution in the future as long as the tax assessor-collector remains as that designee.
And we're saying the tax assessor-collector is in the office, not the person?
It, yes, that is correct. So Goose Creek ISD currently assesses and collects our taxes, so the person that would be in that position, right now it's Jennifer, it would be her. That way, we won't need to do it in the future.
That person changes, we don't have to do this again because we're just...
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Other questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on, we've got a couple of technology purchases.
Yes, this one is district switching purchases. So I recommend that the board authorize the purchase of a new switching component in an amount not to exceed $101,000.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird?
Good evening. So we're looking to purchase the final, I believe, switches to replace all the legacy switches that we have in the district, so we have six or seven more to go. We will be using cycle two of the Safety and Facilities Enhancement Grant for this purchase, so it's not coming out of our general fund. Any questions?
You said, you think this is the last one of these?
Yes. They keep popping up. But yes, sir.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. We got one more.
Yes, similar title, but...
Yep. Yes, I make a recommendation that the board authorize the purchase of a new switching
component in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Oh, this is...
Thank you, Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird? All right. Something different?
This is separate just because these, this was an item that was damaged by Hurricane Barrel when water came in the middle school. So we need to replace that switch right now. We have a stopgap in place. It's working, but not as well as we need it to, so we're just looking to replace that switch.
What's the, like, when we buy these, are they available immediately, or is there a long lead time?
It depends on the model. I'm hoping that we have these within the month, and then we can put them in. It takes a little bit to get these configured, these are massive chassis, so it takes some time, it's going to require some downtime, so we'll have to do it after hours or on, probably on the weekend, because it'll take probably six or seven hours to get it, get everything back to the way it was before the water damage.
Got you. And our in-house staff does this, or do we...
No, we're in-house.
Where, what functions do these and elsewhere in the meantime?
The, what do you mean?
Like the down equipment that was damaged during the storm?
That equipment is no good anymore? No good? We tried.
Equipment that we had on hand to handle the capacity.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We used some equipment that we had on hand.
My question is redundancy in this? You just have to pull out what we've got on the shelf?
We have to pull out what we have on the shelf because these are expensive blade switches, so this is one switch for $30,000. So we keep these others on the shelf in case we have these, it's just kind of a stopgap until we can...
And we can put the one back on the shelf?
Yes, for, yes.
Other questions?
Yes. The ones on the shelf that are going back on the shelf are not, they are not new, they're about eight years old, so.
All in favor? All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and last one, chiller?
I make a motion to purchase a chiller compressor replacement for HHS chiller number two in the amount of $24,628 and 33 cents.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bird?
All right, so we, so also related to Hurricane Barrel, we had mentioned before that we lost the compressor on one of our chillers at the high school. We, this is that compressor that we need to replace. We, we currently are having some issues with chiller number three, so we have three chillers out there. Chiller one's working strong for us, chiller two is 50% because we've lost this compressor, and then chiller three is now giving us some, some, some problems that we're having to look at. I did, just to help us a little bit of clarity, I included our replacement schedule, if you look a couple pages back, and you'll see that the high school, remember the high school chillers are on the bond project to be replaced. On a 15-year lifespan, which is kind of the rule of thumb you can play with, should have, you know, was 2019 replacement. Thankfully, maintenance has done a good job of maintaining them and keeping them up and running. So here we are in 2004 at a 20-year, five years over what we should have been. So that's, some of this is kind of expected, I guess is what I'm saying. And so right now, with chiller three down and this compressor, we're running basically 50% of our whole plant, and we've got to get this back up to build a little bit of redundancy while we're waiting for parts for chiller three. So we were fortunate that FEMA this past week declared, so we can do permanent repairs now, so this would be reimbursed 75% through FEMA, so.
Kind of same question, once, once this goes, how quick can they get working?
So, so last we were told, so, we've talked, we've got a couple quotes, right? And so last week, it was, the first one was like $30,000, those guys had it sitting on the shelf. The, the new company we got the bid in today that we were waiting on, which is under the $25,000 mark we want to bring, they're telling us they can get it pretty quick. They've worked on our equipment before, so they know. And so we're hoping that it's right there, readily available, next couple of weeks that we can get it moving, is our goal. We see it out there, we'll be...
Any questions? All in favor? All in favor, motion carries.
Take a guess.
All right. Okay, it's 7:44, the board will now adjourn into closed session, pursuant to open meetings act and Texas Government Code, sections 551 dot 001, 071, 072, 73, 74, 75, 76, 82, 83, and 9:30, we have returned into open session. Do we have any motions from close?
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion that the board ratify the resignation of Kristen Huff.